So, good morning, everyone. I want to welcome you to the May 4th, 2021 Calvert County Board of Commissioners meeting. This time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Weems if he would do the invocation, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Everyone will please bow their head in reflection and prayer. Dear Lord, in the throes of COVID-19, we ask for good things. We ask that the suffering in Asia, specifically India, be mitigated. We ask for discernment, wisdom, and judgment for the constituents today. And we thank you for all you have given us. Amen.
So, the next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Like to make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second?
So, I have a motion and a second that we...to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 4-0. So, next is public service announcements. I do have one announcement to read before we get to Dr. Folsom this morning. So, yesterday, the county received some questions about a sign located on Route 4 at Bowie Shop Road. And just wanted to let everybody know that, you know, that billboard that's there on Route 4 is a legal sign. It's been there for many years. There was a Supreme Court decision of Reed versus the town of Gilbert in 2015 that says no government can dictate language on a sign or content thereof. So, there is nothing that we as county government can do for a language that's on a legal sign. So, I just want to make sure everybody understands that you may agree or not agree with what the sign says, but it's still freedom of speech and it's been upheld by the Supreme Court. So, we just have to accept. You know, this country was built on the foundation of free speech. And sometimes we like what that free speech says and sometimes we don't. But it's still the foundation of this country that everybody has an individual right to say, voice their opinions. So, just want to make sure everybody understood where we are in that situation. So, next, I'd like to ask Dr. Folsom is filling in for Dr. Polsky today to give us an update on the COVID situation.
Thank you.
Welcome, Dr. Folsom.
Thank you. Thanks for allowing me to pinch it.
Absolutely.
And may the fourth be with you for all those Star Wars fans out there. I'm sorry. All right. So, for the Calvert County COVID update from the Health Department, this is a regular slide that you all see. We did see a slight downtick in our Calvert County COVID-19 cases this week, down to about 130, and a positivity rate has decreased as well, down to a little over 6%. Again, the goal from the CDC would be less than 5%, but ultimately, we're getting there. We did see a slight uptick in our 20-year-olds and our 50-year-olds with a commensurate decrease in our youth, which is fantastic to see. We still see relatively low numbers for our 65 and over community, which is fantastic. Our COVID testing data shows that we have seen a slight uptick in those who have been tested. A little over 2,200 people have been tested this past week, again with 135 cases and a positivity rate of just over 6%. Just keep in mind, again, that less than 5% is the goal for low transmissibility in the county, but we are slowly getting there. Shifting gears to statewide numbers, as Dr. Polsky typically shows, we did see 6,000, a little over 6,000 cases in the state over the past week with 100 deaths total. That equals about 14 Marylanders dying per day of COVID-related illness. Current hospitalizations across the state equal a little over 950 with over 250 people in ICU. Currently, our contact at the hospital did just send me a line list today, and we have four people currently with COVID who are in the hospital, two over 80 years of age and two in their 30s. So, very disparate age groups that are currently there. No ICU admissions currently for COVID, thankfully. Switching gears to COVID vaccination. So, on this slide, we know that this is a very busy slide that we get sent from the state, but you can see that Calvert's, I think, the fifth or sixth line down there. The good news is that we are vaccinating people at at least the rate of the state, if not better. If you look at our adult population, we actually have a percent at about 56% for having received a first dose vaccination. So, that's impressive at this point in time for all adults. And we just sort of want to keep in mind that at this point, although there's a lot of news coming out that we're going to get younger people vaccinated, it still is...we're waiting for the FDA to have their regular meeting this week and everything before we can make any decisions about that. For those 65 and over, we've got a great rate. We're the second in the state behind Howard County, which always surpasses everybody on every health metric in the state. But we are second in the state with a little over 77% of our seniors vaccinated, which is great. Just a reminder that local and mass vaccination sites continue to have vaccines on hand, as do pharmacies. Multiple medical providers in our community have been provided vaccinations. I still think, as a former practicing family doctor in the community for over a decade, the best place for people to get their medical education is from their own personal physician, who can know their medical history and guide them as to where they should get their vaccines and what type of vaccine to get. There are still options to get it at mass vac sites and at our drive-through as well. As Dr. Polsky mentioned last week, the CalvertCountyCOVID-19.com website is now fully operational. You click on the "Go Vax" button, scroll down a little bit, and you see the first and second open public links. So, you can click on those and register yourself at that time. We are no longer requiring that somebody wait for a link to be sent to them. They can just go online and get signed up for our site. We also have partnered with the school system and the hospital to do in high school vaccination clinics this week. So, we did Pawtucket High School yesterday. We have set to do Northern Calvert and Huntington High Schools. So, there'll be a little over 400 16, 17, and 18-year-olds vaccinated with their parents' permission through the school system. And we felt that this was a good option for them in terms of getting there, getting the vaccine, and getting covered. So, any questions?
So, those students, they can only receive a Pfizer vaccination?
Correct. Yes. The hospital and the Health Department put together a request to the state on two sequential weeks, basically asking for more Pfizer allotments. So, we were able to secure Pfizer last week. The school system moved pretty rapidly to create, you know, some clinics there, staffed essentially with their school nurses, and then the emails were sent out so the parents could consent to their children being vaccinated on-site. Those clinics are running 1:00 to 5:30-ish every day so that it allows for those kids to get vaccinated before they head home for the day. It is available to virtual learners as well. So, it's not just for kids who are in Cohort A, Cohort B, or in face-to-face instruction.
So, if your child is at home, all you have to do is register?
Yes. So, you should have gotten a link from eSchool to your email. And there's a little link on there that you should be able to click. We will be running some Pfizer clinics in the weeks to come, we suspect, at our drive-through, but that remains to be seen based on our uptake through the hospital.
But if we have homeschoolers, they may not get that link?
So, they actually were offered, along with Calverton, because Calverton obviously still has some kids in that age group, they were offered vaccination through the hospital last week, but we will have open registrations for Pfizer vaccine for anybody who didn't get in that clinic.
So, this week, did you have enough vaccine to do all the students that requested it?
Yes. Yes. We have ample supply for Pfizer vaccine. We have a little over 1,000 total doses for the county that was provided to us, and we have a little over 400 and...I think we have like 420 students signed up for vaccination at this point in time. So, it's fantastic.
So, are they projecting to give you more Pfizer next week?
We've requested more. Yeah. Dr. Polsky actually sent in his request. He has to submit it by Tuesday every week, but he requested more Pfizer. So, hopefully, we get more of that. And with the potential for getting 12- to 15-year-olds approved in the near future, that might be something that we need to sort of encourage in terms of getting that Pfizer into our county.
So, if someone were to register today?
Yes.
When could they get an appointment to get a?
May the 6th is the next open public link. So, that's two days from now. So, they'd get their first dose on May the 6th, and then their second one would be 28 to 42 days later. They do have to sign up for both the first and second doses on that public link.
So, are we at a point where we have enough vaccine to do everybody that makes requests?
Yep.
So, there's no wait?
Yep. No wait.
Basically.
And if they call the Health Department, our staff knows to sign them up too. If they have difficulties with internet access or connectivity, they can call the Health Department at 410-535-5400 and ask to get signed up. So, everybody there is willing to help assist.
So, I assume that we're going to ramp up outreach?
Yes. So, we are in talks...we already talked with Kathy Maney with the Chamber of Commerce about potentially doing some mobile outreach at various businesses in the community, both in the south and northern ends in particular, since our drive-through is centrally located. So, some of those people that are working long hours during the day might need someone to sort of be there at the opposite ends of the county. So, we're working on that. Kim Long is one of the people that works for our homebound citizens. So, she gets regular requests to go into the home and give them vaccinations. So, those people are already sort of on our list to do vaccination outreach efforts. Commissioner Hans, Communications is also working with the Health Department to actively promote that.
Right. Because, you know, the previous problem was we didn't have enough vaccine.
No vaccine. Yes.
So, you know, it's hard to advertise for people to come in.
Exactly.
Now, we're getting to a point where we're going to have plenty of vaccine. So, it's to get the message out that it is important.
Absolutely. And most medical providers that have had vaccination in their practices have also seen that they've sort of hit that sort of standpoint where all the people that were very eager to get in. And now, it's about, you know, some of my old colleagues have been able to sort of talk with their patients and say, "This would be a wise decision for you." And so, it's helpful to have the doses in their offices as well. So, any outreach that we can do to help is what we would like to do, for sure.
And there shouldn't be any reason to drive to Waldorf for Baltimore anymore?
No. No. And in fact, you know, we're trying to work with some people. The other big group that might become one of the outreach groups will be kids arriving back from colleges. And so, they may have received their first dose of Pfizer or Moderna at their college, and they'll need to get their second dose here. We should have ample supply to be able to provide that for them. So, we'll work on those second-dose clinics for that age group as well when they come back.
So, I had an email from a citizen this week that said at a certain facility, several staff members had tested positive.
Yes.
They relayed that a request had been made to retest those individuals just to make sure.
Yes.
And that was declined. They were just stuck in this 14-day quarantine. And they didn't understand why there wasn't more willingness to retest those individuals just to be sure.
Yeah.
To not have to go through that. So, can you quarter talk about that?
Yes. So, whenever there's a technical outbreak, we actually have to report it to the state of Maryland. An epidemiologist up at the state actually is the one who dictates repeat testing. Two of the people have genetic sequencing pending at the state level. So, we're trying to look to see if there are variants as it pertains to that particular situation, which would make more sense as to why these people would be testing positive. But a lot of this is dictated at the state level by a state epidemiologist. And the parameters for 14-day quarantines sort of is across the board for all nursing homes at the state of Maryland. So, we don't have much discretion in terms of that. They are all PCR-tested. So, it's not just a rapid test, you know, and kind of going by that. So, they should be getting PCR testing. Yeah.
And it's also important to note that once you get vaccinated, you still can get COVID.
Yes. Yes.
People under a conception that, "Once I get vaccinated, I can't get it."
Correct.
But unless I'm wrong.
Well, with a 90-
You can still get it, but it reduces the impact that it has on your body. It should keep you out of the hospital and it should keep you from dying.
Yes. Exactly. Yeah. So, with a 95% effectiveness rate, which is what Pfizer and Moderna have, for every 1,000 people we vaccinate, we'll see 50 people test positive after full vaccination. But those people will be less likely to go on to be hospitalized in the ICU and die of COVID and likely will decrease their transmission rate to other people in the community, which is also what we're going for, for those members. Yeah.
We should not be shocked when somebody that's been vaccinated tests positive for COVID.
No, sir. We should not. And please get tested if you have symptoms, you know. We have ample testing supplies, so please get tested if you have symptoms, for sure.
Correct.
Okay.
I think I have another question. Commissioner Hutchins?
Yes.
Yes. Doctor, once again, the emphasis, and short, that is, get vaccinated. Continue to practice the CDC guidelines irregardless of whether you're vaccinated or not, correct?
Correct. And let's get back to normal.
Okay. And that's the line to put forward.
Yes. Absolutely. Yes. Thank you.
Whatever that "normal" is going to look-
Whatever it's going to look like.
It should be a bumper sticker, "Let's Get Back to Normal." A T-shirt.
We'll put it on our next social media, all right? Any other questions?
I don't-
Doctor, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome. It was a pleasure. All right.
Maybe when Polsky comes back, you can just tell him to stay in his office.
Sounds good.
You can come anytime.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, the next item on the agenda is Proclamations. Commissioner Hart has correctional officers' employees recognition.
Yes, sir. And is there anyone?
Oh, there's a bunch.
Like to come up?
We've got excellent security today.
Um, how do we want to do this?
Well, you have to use the mic if you want to say anything, and then you can come up. We're definitely going to get a picture. And-
Do you want me to kind of like in the old days, I just kind of get miked?
Yeah.
Today, it's kind of like a flashback. We have people and-
Yeah. Mike, meet Mike.
Right?
Do you want me to go first?
Sure.
Well, before I get...can anybody hear me? So, before I get started, I just want to say it's an honor to get to read this. I think, you know, when we think corrections, you know, a lot of times, the public don't even think about it. You know, we don't see them on the side of the road. We don't call them on 911. You know, they're... It's almost like this forgotten part of what we do, and they're so essential. I've always said, I've always thought it was the hardest job in Calvert County. And, you know, when I was a kid, you know, nobody lived here. You might have a handful of people there. Let me tell you, that place is for real. I mean, it's, um, it gets its cast of characters through there. And, I mean, our people, we're so fortunate, we're so well-trained, they have to do so many things. You know, you think, okay, you have them locked down and that's it. We're teaching in there, helping them get their GEDs. Some have drug problems. I mean, the list of things that they handle, it's crazy, and it's much more than I could ever do. I'm telling you, my hat's off. It is nothing but respect for the men and women down there. And the whole, the whole everything. I mean, how the...you know, I've always looked at corrections in the sheriff's office as the same thing. It's all one big team, and it reflects it. And we are so fortunate to have the people that we have. So, with that said, I'm going to read this here. It says, "Whereas, Calvert County employs 80 dedicated correctional deputies and 13 professional civilian staff with the shared mission of safely and securely housing offenders. And whereas the Calvert County Detention Center staff is well-trained professionals and deputies who must adhere to established laws, operate under a strict doctrine of conduct, meet federal and state standards, and conform to the highest level of ethics, morals, and personal conduct. Whereas correction is an honorable profession with deep roots in our community and generations of correctional professionals living within Calvert County who serve quietly and admirably behind the walls of the local jails and prisons. And whereas the obligation of these individuals to report to work regardless of weather, environmental conditions, including their obligation to protect all persons within the Detention Center of COVID-19 is honorable." And let me stop on that. And that's true, too, that people forget. Most people work a job, think, "Hey, I'm not feeling that good." It don't apply. It's snowing outside. It don't apply. They have to come to work, you know. I mean, it's...think about that level of responsibility and all our public safety people all work under that, too. You know, it's...there is...even the type of vehicle you buy. You know, you live in an area that's snow. You have to think, "Do I have a vehicle that I'm going to be able to get to work?" I mean, so, it's such an obligation and dedication. It really is. "Whereas, it's important to remember those who have dedicated their lives to preventing escape, escorting, and transporting dangerous offenders and performing the daily tasks of correctional officers. Thou therefore be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the week of May 2 through 8, 2021 be known as National Correctional Officer and Employees Week in Calvert County. Be it further proclaimed that the appreciation of all Calvert County citizens is hereby extended to the Calvert County Detention Center in observance of this national recognition given under our hands and seal this fourth day, May 2021, signed by all five county commissioners."
Mr. President?
Yes. Commissioner Hutchins?
Do I add to that? There's an aspect that we seldom take note of. Correctional officers make a tremendous impact on those that they oversee there as inmates in making a difference for them. And I've run across a number of inmates that have told me that, you know, this officer made a...correctional officer made a difference for me later on in life. So, they do a tremendous job across the board, not just of housing inmates, but also of giving them a role model and a helping hand out as they move forward. Because we've got to continue to be able to further assist these people as they return to society.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Weems? No? Just I want to add my thanks as Commissioner Hart...Commissioner Hutchins says, you know, "It's a great service to the community to make sure we all stay safe." It's unfortunate that we have to have jails, but they're a necessary part of public service, and we appreciate everything you all do to protect our community. So, y'all like to speak? Please.
Yeah. I just want to take the opportunity to thank the commissioners for recognizing Correctional Employees Week. We don't get out much, kind of confined to where we are. But we appreciate the recognition and the support from the commissioners. And Commissioner Hart, you hit it right on the head. It is really a team between the Detention Center and the Sheriff's Office, built by these two guys right here. I can't say enough about the support that they provide to the Detention Center, as well as all their staff. Any deputies always...I mean, we need them. They come right down there. I mean, and they're always supportive of the officers when they see them on the streets. So, that goes a long way in keeping that teamwork and the morale up at the Detention Center. Because it has been a very trying year medically for the Detention Center. It's trying in and of itself, but with the COVID epidemic, this pandemic, I just can't really say enough. When other jails' sick leave was rising, overtime was rising, in Calvert County, it was going down. We managed to keep sick leave lower than what it was prior, overtime down. And that's a credit to, you know, really, the four shift sergeants down there that run those shifts to keep that morale up, keep that cleaning up, keep the things going on, maintaining all the protocols, keeping the area as safe as possible. So, I really would be remiss if I didn't recognize all of the staff of the Detention Center, civilian and uniformed staff, for all the extra effort they did during the pandemic, but especially those teams that, you know, really running and managing that floor. Because like you said, we have to come to work. We have to be there. We have to be in that building, COVID or not. So, I really, I thank you again for the recognition.
Real quick, Sheriff Evans, I just want to commend Major Reese on his 15 years of being down there, assistant, and now the warden. Well done, Major Reese. And we are a family of law enforcement in Calvert County Sheriff's Office. And thank you for your service. And Commissioner Hart didn't say this, but his daughter was a Rookie of the Year for the Calvert County Detention Center this past time. So, we've got some good employees down there. We find good Calvert County people, and thanks for recognizing us.
Sure. So, the next proclamation on the agenda is National Travel and Tourism Week. Commissioner Hart, and I believe we have Hillary Daley with us?
Oh, sure. Good morning.
Good morning.
You know, you talk about industry been hit hard. You know, when we had our meeting with New York, one of the presenters there, they were from Jersey, Atlantic City. And talk about having a hard time because travel was done with COVID. And they were questioning us, you know, "How are you guys doing it?" Because they had had such a big hit, you know, with that. And it's tough, you know. The restaurants, hotels, all the people that owe their living to all that. And, you know, like we said earlier, hopefully, there's a bumper sticker or shirt that says, "Let's Get Back to Normal." You know, human beings are supposed to interact with each other. It's, you know, families are supposed to interact. So, hopefully, when we're reading this next year, there's no masks on, there's no, you know, hopefully... I have to think that way, right? I mean, you have to just be positive. So, this is a sign of start getting positive, right? And it says here, "Whereas, on the way...week of May 2 through 8, 2021, has been designated as National Travel and Tourism Week. And whereas travel is among the largest private sector employers in the U.S., supporting millions of American jobs, accounting for more than three-quarters of all...more than three-quarters of all trips taken in the U.S., thereby spurring countless benefits for travelers, encouraging creating family memories, connecting communities, enriching people's lives. And whereas travel to and within the U.S. has historically provided significant economic benefits for the nation, generating more than $2 trillion in economic output and including $1 trillion spent directly by travelers. And whereas travel has a positive effect on Calvert County's economy, prosperity, and image abroad. With labor income at 7.5% and employment at 9% of the local economy, Calvert County reported 1.2 in adjusted sales and use taxes in 2019 in tourism. And whereas the tourism industry suffered great setbacks in 2020 due to effects of COVID-19, but our sites, attractions, hotels, restaurants, and workforce that supports and them remain committed to a strong enthusiastic comeback in 2021, welcoming visitors from near and afar, always have been and always will be, enduring character of travel industry in Calvert County." And speaking of that, remember that movie Vacation? They made a whole movie about traveling, right? Whole movie's about a family riding in a car. You know, and you think about that. We all have a vacation story, you know, and it's just part of your makeup as a family and who you are. I mean, you know, maybe not to the extreme of they did, but, you know, it's so essential. I mean, every family needs to have that one, at least dreadful, car trip. That somebody has to go to the bathroom every five minutes, and something doesn't go right in the car, or they miss a reservation. You almost need it, like part of your checklist, you know, as a family. So, hopefully, we'll get some more of those soon. And so, with that now there, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the week of May 2 through 8, 2021, known as National Travel and Tourism Week, be it further proclaimed that we urge all citizens to join in recognizing the critical role this industry plays in Calvert County, given our hands and seal this fourth day of May 2021, signed by all five county commissioners. And would you like to say something?
Yeah, just a short thing. My name's Hillary Daley, and I'm the Tourism Program Specialist for Calvert County. I work in the Department of Economic Development. And National Travel and Tourism Week is a time for destinations like Calvert County to celebrate the economic benefits and quality of life that tourism businesses and attractions, like our museums, parks, restaurants, wineries, breweries, beaches, golf courses, marinas, shops, pools, provide to visitors and residents of the community. So, today, I also have the distinct honor of introducing Tom Raifert is called in today. He's the Assistant Secretary of Commerce for the state of Maryland. Mr. Raifert oversees the Division of Tourism, Film, and the Arts, as well as the Department of Marketing and Communications. And I think he would like to say something.
How are you there? Well, thank you very much, Hillary. I hope you can hear me all right, everybody there in the commissioner room. President Hans and Commissioners Hart, Weems, and Hutchins, I see all of you on my screen, and I thank you for your service because tourism is a very important part of your county's economic well-being. Just in Calvert County alone, in 2019, the total taxes that were generated by that industry was $5.3 million, and that included $575,000 in lodging tax and $5.3 million in...excuse me, $4 million in sales taxes in the tourism tax code. And as Commissioner Hart did say, the pandemic has really thrown a curveball to everybody in the state of Maryland that works in tourism. We had about 150,000 people that worked in both arts and entertainment and accommodations and also food service that lost their jobs early in the pandemic. Currently, as of the end of April, we have recovered over 87,000 jobs in those tourism categories. We're heading in the right direction, and the light at the end of the tunnel isn't an oncoming train. It's actually good things to come. And every year, for the past- And every year for the past 38 years, we have celebrated this week as National Tourism Week. And the governor also proclaimed it. Now you have proclaimed it as well. So I thank you all for your support. I also thank the good folks in your Economic Development Office and Tourism Office for doing the great things that they're doing to promote not only Calver County, but also to promote Maryland to the outside world. So thank you all very much for this, uh, recognition of the importance of tourism.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take a picture?
Thank you, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for joining us, Mr. Secretary. You know, um, we do enjoy a good tourism industry here in Calver County. And, uh, the last two Sundays I happened to be in Solomon's, went to church and it was good to see all the parking lots full. That early on a Sunday, I was surprised. The last two Sundays were the restaurants are all doing good. Uh, I do want to put a plug in, the restaurants are hiring and, uh, we, the complaint we are hearing now is they're struggling to get staff back up. So, uh,
That is correct, sir. We're doing several, several, uh, workforce development things and, uh, trying to get people back to work in the state of Maryland. Uh, one of our challenges is of course childcare. And, uh, a lot of jurisdictions have kind of funny schedules with school. And it's difficult, uh, when there's a combination of in-person and virtual and that, that is definitely a challenge.
Yes.
You know, last, uh, complete year of, uh, statistics, uh, 2019, we had 42 million visitors in the state of Maryland. And, uh, I think that Solomon's Island and, uh, Calver County had a big share of those. And I thank you for, uh, promoting tourism to the outside world.
Absolutely. So thank you for joining us today.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is, uh, Older American Month. And, uh, I got picked to read that. I don't know why. And I think we have, uh, Bessie Hop- Hoskins and Kathy Baron with us. So they come up.
Welcome ladies. Good morning.
Come here, isn't it? Who are you going, right here?
So.
Not yet.
Good morning ladies. Thank you for joining us. So, whereas the older adults in Calver County are the roots from which our community grows, who bestow gifts of wisdom and insight upon our younger generations, you guys remember that? And who strengthen the bonds between neighbors to create a better place to live. And whereas an increasing number of adults are reaching retirement age and remaining stronger and more active than in years past, they are taking charge, striving for wellness, focusing on independence and advocating for themselves and others. And whereas older adults in Calver County deserve recognition for their contributions they have made and will continue to contribute to the culture, economy and character of our community and our nation. And whereas the President of the United States annually declares the month of May as Older Americans Month, with this year's theme being Communities of Strength. This month, we will celebrate the strength of older adults in the National Aging Network with special emphasis on the power of connection and engagement in building strong communities. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County, that the month of May be known as Calver County Older Americans Month. By this action, let it be known that we honor and are indebted to Calver County's older citizens for their lifetime achievements and service to our county, given under our hands and seal this fourth day of May, 2021, signed by all our commissioners. Ladies, would you like to say something?
Um, yeah, just lay a little note of what we, what we do for the county commissioners. Um, Commissioner Hart knows we've been working hard for years now with it. Um, out, we're on the outreach program. So we go out there and try to help seniors like doing their vaccinations, sign them up. A lot of them don't, are not on computers. They don't know how to use the phone to get through to that. So we've been doing that. Um, we had the farmer's market this past Saturday. We saw hundreds of citizens there. Um, that's North Beach, my market's open now. So we've been doing quite a bit. We have transportation wellness for them. So we're trying to take care of them because a lot of them are by themselves. I know the senior centers opened yesterday. And, um, there are so many of them that are so happy to be there because that's all they have. That's their life, extended family. So we're, we're glad to help.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
So you're quickly going to notice the theme here because now I have the Historic Preservation Proclamation.
After that is Fossil Week and Commissioner Hans will be handling that as well.
I told him you can call me anything but late for dinner. I don't care what it is. But, uh, I got selected to do, uh, older people and, uh, historic preservation, which is, uh, okay. So, whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride and maintaining community character, while enhancing livability and encouraging tourism. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals to help to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas National Preservation Month is designed to encourage residents to go out and visit historic sites that make our communities meaningful places to live. And whereas National Preservation Month 2021 is co-sponsored by the Calver County Historic District Commission, the Calver County Historical Society, the Calver County Heritage Committee, the Maryland Historical Trust and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County, that the month of May, 2021, be known as Historic Preservation Month in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that we call upon the residents of Calver County to join their fellow citizens across Maryland and the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance, given under our hands and seal this fourth day of May, 2021. Mary Beth?
Good morning, Commissioners. Mary Beth Cook.
Commissioner Hutchins?
Yes, I could not let this go by the, uh, historic preservation of the assets that we have that have reflected the population and the people that have dedicated so much to this county and to our nation and our state. Uh, one of those, uh, locations being the National Guard Armory that served from the period of the height of the Cold War to the war on terrorism. So it's a good opportunity for us to revisit that also as one of the historic, uh, uh, buildings and structures that we have to recognize contr- contributions of people that served there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning. I just wanted to thank you commissioners, um, for your continued support of historic preservation in the county through Christopher Spurling, our position, full-time position. Um, he's joining us virtually and Kathleen Say, who's our part-time position. Um, they do wonderful things and, um, to continue to just preserve all of the great history in Calver County. And with me today is Tom Dugan, the Chair of the Historic District Commission. And he'd probably say a few words and accept the proclamation. Thank you.
Yes, uh, thank you commissioners, uh, from the Historic District Commission, not just for the proclamation, but for your partnership in preserving Calver County's historic assets, uh, of which we have many and which make the county unique. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Hutchins.
Uh, also, uh, someone that is no longer, uh, with us in employment and had retired, but certainly has played a tremendous role in Calver County that we should not forget and a recenizer on this day. It's a first evening award.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Co- Commissioner Weems, you have the next proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we have any representatives for this proclamation? Going once?
Don't think so.
Going twice? Okay. So. Whereas Ayler's Danlos Syndromes, EDS, is a group of disorders that affect the body's connective tissues, which supports and constructs the skin, joints, blood vessels, gut and many other organs and tissues. It affects more than one in 5,000 people, both males and females of every age and race, and is a chronic lifelong condition. And whereas Hypermobility Spectrum Disorder, HSD, is diagnosed when the musculoskeletal, skeletal, you guys were right.
So, so, so in full transparency, when we went through these, I said, I'm so thankful Commissioner Weems is on the board for this one.
Thank you.
It is.
Complications of joint hypermobility and joint instability, such as ease of injury, joint pain and dislocations, arise in a person who does not have the defining features of an underlying syndrome, such as EDS or other heritable disorders of connective tissue. And whereas in addition, several related disorders are observed in a number of people with EDS and with HSD. These add complexity to the presentation of their condition and its management. And whereas a network of EDS and HSD support groups can help connect those managing life with these conditions, as well as better informing the public and healthcare communities. And whereas early and accurate diagnosis can provide the opportunity to create life-saving medical plans and improve quality of life. However, there's currently no treatment for Ayler's Danlos Syndromes and no known cure. So it is imperative that further medical research and awareness be wa- be made. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calver County, that the month of May, 2021, be known as Ayler's Danlos Syndromes and Hypermobility Spectrum Disorders Awareness Month in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that we commend all those who are committed to educating and increasing awareness and urge all citizens to join in increasing awareness and understanding of these disorders. Given under our hands and seal this fourth day of May, 2021. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Weems. So the next item on the agenda is awards and I think we have Lisa Talamay with us. Oh, okay. Sharon, come on down.
Good morning, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sharon Hudson. I'm part of the Rec- Parts and Recreation Team. I'm here today as a member of the Employee Recognition Committee to introduce Calver County's April 2021 Employee of the Month. Before I introduce, um, our April winner, here's a quick reminder of what we look for in Employee of the Month. This award acknowledges individuals for excellence, for superior job performance and special individual efforts. Some of the suggested criterias are effectiveness of public contact, respect to fellow employees, quality and quantity of work, contributions towards improving occasion, um, organizational morale and actions that improve our public image. Anyone can nominate a coworker for this award. Please check the ERC webpage on the county internet page or contact an ERC member. It is my privilege to introduce the April 2021 Employee of the Month, Kim Gott, Office Specialist for Emergency Management. Kim Gott is a familiar face to those of us on the ERC. She served on this ERC for over 10 years, six years as Chair. Kim has infinitely more comfortable celebrating other people's successes and prefers to avoid the limelight. After years of recognition, recognizing and creating others, so I'm sorry, celebrating others, have realized that we with the ERC, who have had the privilege of working with Kim, already know that Kim is exemplary. Recently, Kim was re- recu- recruited to organize, coordinate and oversee a team of 12 part-time ta- call takers to respond to citizens' vaccine pre-registration questions. Kim is the example of the type of smart, thoughtful, caring employee we need to take on this type of challenge. She has not only provided excellent internal and external customer service, but Kim has identified citizens who require special accommodations and referred them to the Office on Aging of, of Community Resources for appropriate services. Kim navigated the multiple challenge associated with registering seniors for our local vaccine clinics. Kim worked with her staff to complete the list of hundreds of seniors and do outreach within a few hours to contact those that were eligible. She has also worked with her team to ensure that she, that the vaccinated individuals were removed from the county's in-depth database. So time was not wasted on duplicate efforts. Her can-do attitude with her call center staff and her excellent coordination with other departments ensured that the call centers worked efficiently to support the vaccine pre-registration process. The senior centers clinics utilize of our citizens. The ERC is delighted to be part of this recognition. And we would like to thank an exceptional coworker, Kim, for being a positive support to our citizens, coworkers alike, for making the county safer, its services more accessible and projecting that we all know that Calver County is the greatest place to live and work. Thank you, Kim, for all you do. Thank you for all those that took the time out to nominate Kim. Thank you to our commissioners and to our continued support for Employee Recognition Committee. At this time, I would like to invite Jennifer Moreland and Jackie Vaughn up.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Jackie Vaughn, Director of Public Safety. When I called Kim when we first started, um, talking about running the call center and we offered our backup emergency operations center to, to house that because we had the phones and the capability of doing that there. It was recommended that I contact Kim and see if she would be the supervisor of those call takers and I did. And she said, tell me what you need me to do. I'm there for you. And Ki- and Kim has that ki- that can-do attitude. And I told her I wouldn't embarrass her up here today, but you know.
No, it's okay.
But she, you know, she has that can-do attitude. You, you call her with a problem or an issue or something you need done, Kim's there for you. She'll do it. She's, she's been dedicated. She's fit in very well with the call takers we've had there. We've got some excellent employees there. Um, and I keep recruiting and, and telling the departments, if you're looking for staff, we've had some excellent, excellent employees there. Some of them have actually been hired full-time with the county from those call takers there. Yeah, um, Mr. Willis knows. He's got one in his office working there now too. And, you know, I, and I would recommend or give a, a raving recommendation for any of those folks that have been down there working. And Kim, they've gone the extra mile now because there are vaccines available. They're taking those lists and calling folks and saying, have you got your vaccination yet? If not, let me schedule you. I, I can get you in there now because we know we have some vaccines available and, and they're doing that now. The call takers are taking those lists and saying. The call takers are taking those lists and saying, can we get you scheduled? So they've gone above and beyond. So we're happy to have Kim there. This is two for us, two in a row. We had the Employee of the Month last month and this month. So we're going to keep going, see how many more we can get. So thank you for recognizing her.
I just, I wanted to thank the ERC for the opportunity to nominate and recognize Kim over here. I'm the Department of Community Resources Director, Jennifer Moreland, and our department works very closely with her these past few months. And the numbers today show it, second in the state for vaccinations for seniors. I am tickled. I am just so excited. And I could not have done that without the partnerships that we had across county government. And I was on such a high with making these nominations. And Linda Vasallo, our Deputy Director, knows it because I called her first thing and told her, we have to nominate these people because they have worked so hard. So about Kim, if there is anyone that's up for a challenge, it is Kim Gott here. She is, she thrives on it. And when county needed COVID-19 call center for pre-registration, she was up for the task. And she had to supervise a group of call center staff who had to answer questions they have never been given before or asked before. She had to use software they've never used with them and deal with people in a very heightened state of anxiety because they want to get their vaccine and now. All this training, too, with this group, had to be done in a very short window. And, you know, she was up for the challenge. I was really pleased with the call center's collaboration with our department under Kim's direction. Anytime she would have, you know, some, some folks that really needed special assistance, she was there to give them the reassuring, the sympathetic voice and the reassuring ear. And she would connect our department with those individuals so we could do further handholding. And it was a really good relay system we had going on. She is dependable. She's hardworking and she will maybe not let you know it, but she's got a heart of gold like nobody else in Calvert County government. So anyways, I am grateful that we had the chance to recognize her.
Kim, do you want to say anything?
It was an adventure.
Well, I tell you.
It was, it was great.
You have to get up to the microphone.
It was great working with the elderly, the older population. And it was very rewarding. So I just thank everybody for nominating me. I'm not an upfront type of person. I'm behind the scenes.
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Hudson.
Yes, sir.
What a great example of a humanitarian effort. I mean, that just, that in this day and time and what has transpired in the last year and the efforts that, that this employee has put forward has just been a tremendous example of what government should do and can do in humanitarian crisis. So she stands out not only in this county, but this, in the state, as well as the nation.
Thank you, Commissioner Hudson.
Well, Kim, it's no surprise you're up here. It really isn't. And from my short time on the board, I know our interactions, and she's right. She's not a pat herself on the back person. You will never know she's, but she's always working, you know. And honesty, integrity, no matter what, is always going to be there. And I'm very proud that you work with us. You make us look fantastic. You really do. And like to come up here and present you with this. And this is just a small appreciation from us. And as Commissioner Nutter would always say, the most important part is the check.
Let me bring this back up from Jackie. Commissioners, I normally wouldn't get up here for an Employee of the Month, but some quick background on how this happened. Doc Polsky came to me and said he needed help with the Health Department getting the word out there to all citizens of the county. So it was a Wednesday morning, and I gave Linda three days to create what you're, what we're talking about here today. You're going to hear more of it in just a minute. You can't do that if you don't have a core of outstanding employees. That Kim knows that she's one of many. She is a very shy person. Here's what I would say, both, both of the individuals that you're going to see the second here in a minute. The difference is, is I see one of my responsibilities as removing obstacles from in front of our staff. My concern with Kim is that I have to go make sure that the obstacles are still breathing. Because she's not that shy. But this is truly an indication of the amount of effort that all of your employees put out. These, everybody can't come up here. They will all agree with that. So what you're seeing is the dedication that your staff has. They are the ambassadors of that today. So thank you, Kim.
So the next award on the agenda, from Lorraine Joyner?
Kim, don't go anywhere. Good morning, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lorraine Joyner. I am an Executive Administrative Assistant with the Department of Community Resources. I'm here today as Chair of the Employee Recognition Committee to present a Pride and Quality Award. But before I go there, I just want to say briefly that Kim was Chair of the ERC for six years. And when she stepped down, it's taken about six of us to pick up the workload that she did pretty much by herself. And we're still scrambling. So she is definitely a hard worker and committed to whatever she puts her mind to. The Pride and Quality Award is special. It's a unique award. We probably give one or two out a year. It's reserved for those occasions when we want to acknowledge extraordinary job performance that results in greater efficiencies. And that would be a significant time or cost-saving measures to the county or extraordinary broad-reaching public service efforts. And it's that kind of broad-reaching public service effort that we're recognizing today with our Pride and Quality Award recipient. And it's, I'd like to invite Ruthie Butler. She is a Research Specialist for Technology Services to come up and join me. Hey, Ruthie. So in November 2020, Ruthie was asked to use her knowledge and experience with Zendesk to create a way for all Calvert County citizens to pre-register for the COVID vaccination. Ruthie communicated with the Health Department to ensure appropriate information was collected and developed a system that worked with all vaccine partners. As a result of her efforts, 27,000 citizens were registered in the first month. Calvert County's pre-registration portal was one of the first in the United States to use Zendesk. The company used Ruthie's work as a model for other regions. We commend Ruthie for her ingenuity and problem-solving skills. She was instrumental in helping our citizens get vaccinated, ultimately saving countless lives. The ERC is delighted to be a part of this recognition. And we thank this exceptional coworker for being a positive team player, for her support of citizens and coworkers alike, for making the county safer and taking steps to improve the quality of life for our most vulnerable citizens. Thank you, Ruthie, for all you do. Thank you to those who nominated Ruthie. And Commissioners, as always, thank you for your continued support of the Employee Recognition Committee. Is Ruthie's supervisor online? Maybe not, okay.
Your buddy's popping up.
Jennifer wants to share.
Thank you. So actually, I'm going to give some background on the timeline. Jennifer Moreland, Director of Community Resources. It was actually in mid-November that the county acquired Zendesk, but for other purposes, that included our grants and rental assistance programs and, and other programs associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. She actually didn't get notified until January 13 that the county needed a vaccine registration portal. And after three business days, it went live, which is incredible. When she reached out to Zendesk, she told them, this is your make or break moment. And she, she was right. We were the first Zendesk site, as mentioned, used for this purpose. And subsequently, Calvert County became a case study. And because the coders were really interested in what we're doing, the county received more support to develop it. So cool. In the Department of Community Resources, we really had to change how we work this past year using more virtual and cloud-based applications. I'm sure all of Calvert County government would say that they've had to change how they work. But the key to staff being successful in these applications is having technology staff like Ruthie that are knowledgeable and guiding us through the learning process. It's different for all of us. Ruthie is a shining example of this kind of employee and always makes herself available when needed. She's adept at working through coding issues and problem-solving challenges. And she literally does it all with a smile. Like, I don't know how she does it. She's a team player. She communicates openly with everyone and stays positive when faced with a challenge. And I, I would like to say, I would not be surprised if her voices behind the future Zendesk demo videos, like, they're coming and I'm sure she's gonna, she'll be the voice of them. But I just want to say congrats to Ruthie. And thank you, ERC, for acknowledging her efforts because they really have been extraordinary. And she's another piece of the puzzle of getting all these people vaccinated that just couldn't be overlooked. I'd like to call Linda Vasallo, the Deputy Director, who actually oversaw our Vaccine Committee this whole time and is still overseeing it.
I want to thank Mark for the three days turnaround. When we get started. Linda Vasallo, Deputy County Administrator. I want to say first and foremost, I've had the pleasure of supervising Ruthie for 24 of the 25 years I've been here. She's a phenomenal employee. Whenever we put a challenge before her, she does it with a smile on her face. So I commend you for that. And this particular effort has been phenomenal. Ruthie and Kim both pivoted very quickly to get us up and running with little or no issue. I mean, I know behind the scenes, we had some challenges. But in addition to getting this Vaccine Registration Portal up and running, she was able to obtain some cost savings for us by telling Zendesk to turn on the dime. So I just want to congratulate her and thank her for all the hard work. Kim, you as well. So that, I'll turn it back over to the keyboard.
So I just, on behalf of the board, want to thank Ruthie and Kim for what you've done. You know, people, on behalf of the board and the citizens of Calvert County, you know, we asked both of you to do things that were not your normal responsibilities. And you stepped up to the plate and helped our citizens and make this a better place. And it's just a, this is an example of the kind of employees we have in Calvert County government. We can't bring them all up here every week and recognize all of them. But we bring the cream of the crop. So we're, we set a pretty high bar for everybody else. So once again, I just want to thank and congratulate Ruthie and Kim on the outstanding efforts for this. So, and now Commissioner Wiems, I believe you have a certificate and a check?
I, I do. But first, Ms. Ruthie, do you have anything you'd like to say, madam?
I will. I'm Ruthie Butler, working Technology Services, and I am honored today to receive this award. It was an uphill journey, for sure, as Kim said. But it was something that was important for our community. And I am honored to have been a part of that and to have been able to get people vaccinated and to try to get us back to normal. So thank you. I couldn't have done it without you guys. This is the one award for county government employees that I haven't won. So I'm super excited to round out that journey. So thank you very much for the recognition.
Thank you.
And is it, this is a rhetorical question. You have someone standing behind you. Would you like to recognize, or?
Come up to the microphone. Introduce yourself.
I am Joyce Jett. I work in the State's Attorney's Office downstairs. And my daughter, I want to say she does smile. Sometimes I saw it grimace more than smile. But it was a very major project for her. And she did a great job. She worried that it was gonna crash. I mean, that first night, she, she was like frantic. I took her out for drinks that night because she needed it. But yes, it was very traumatic for her waiting to make sure that everything worked. Love her.
Thank you, Mom.
Yes.
Mr. President?
Commissioner Hudson.
Before you start there, please. Just again, to recognize Ruthie as another one of these fine examples that stand out not only for this county, but for this state and this nation in stepping up with, during a crisis that is of proportions hopefully we never see again. And this is just a fine example of humanitarian effort and something that she just continues to do just a matter of fact is part of her job. So again, thank you very much, Ruthie.
Thank you.
Ms. Ruthie, I, I have a plaque and a check for you. I want to wish you a Mother's Day filled with joy and love. And Ms. Joyce, if, if I could, you know I'd hug you right now. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna give, I'm gonna give Ms., Ms. Ruthie a plaque and a check. But I have something for you as well. And Mr. Ronnie, it's benign, it's altruistic. So please come up. Would you like me to present it to you first and then to your daughter? Okay. All right, well, I can do it on the slide, too. No one will even know.
He always does. He's been doing that for 40 years. He does, he does. Well, before, can you get a picture of this recording? Ready for this? I did, I painted it this morning.
All right. So the next item on our agenda is appointments. Deputy Administrator Linda Vasallo?
Good morning again, Commissioners. I'm going to walk you through four different appointments, starting with the Commission on Aging. Staff is recommending appointment of Tanaya and Granland, Dr. Suda Haley, and Margaret Phipps. There are, there were five vacancies. And filling this will have one remaining vacancy coming to your attention.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second?
Have a motion in a second that we reappoint Tara Granland, Dr. Suda Haley, and Margaret Phipps. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
All right, your second appointment this morning is for the Cove Point Light Station Commission. Staff is requesting a motion to appoint Leslie Garcia, Valerie Miller, and David Ware. And upon appointment, this will be a filled commission.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second?
Have a motion in a second that we appoint David Ware, Valerie Miller, Leslie Garcia to the Cove Point Light Station Commission. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
Your third appointment is for the Animal Matters Hearing Board. And staff is requesting a motion to appoint Charles Bucy and Megan Noyes to fill a vacancy.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second?
Have a motion in a second that we reappoint Charles Bucy and how about?
Megan Noyes.
And Megan Noyes, sorry. Got distracted. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
All right, and your final group of appointments is for the Economic Development Advisory Board. We have a couple here. Staff is requesting a motion to appoint Michael Benton, Stacy Han-Ruff, Carrie Ann Polk, Leanne, I'm sorry, Lisa Height-Gross, and Kevin Phillips, and Stephen Riggan to fill vacancies. And this comes with a recommendation from the EDAC.
Move to approve.
Second?
So I have a motion to reappoint Mike Benton, Stacy Han-Ruff, and Carrie Polk, and to appoint Lisa Height-Gross, Kevin Phillips, and Stephen Riggan to the Economic Development Advisory Commission. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. So the next item on the agenda is consent. We have Department of Public Works to exercise a purchase option on 196 Calvert Beach Street. Department of Planning, Zoning, Historic Preservation Tax Credit TC-2019-11. Department of Finance and Budget, child support lease agreements. Item four, Department of Finance and Budget, Tri-County Council for Southern Maryland Increase in Dues. Item five, Department of Finance and Budget, Health Insurance Subsidiaries for Retirees. Item six, Office of the County Administrator, Calvert Marine Museum Recommendation to Sign. Are there any objections to the consent agenda? Hearing none, the consent items will be adopted. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing and we are just a few minutes late. So Veronica? Or Commissioner Hart, I'm sorry.
That's okay, if you want to take over?
Yes, if you don't mind.
No, no, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. Veronica Atkinson, Capital Projects Analyst for Finance and Budget. Today's public hearing has many moving parts. We have experts on standby if we have any questions. Today's public hearing is a request for a budget adjustment and once approved would lead us in to the approval of an increased revenue stabilization resolution. As I read through the memo, I do have some details about each of the projects that is not in the memo. So if that's okay, I'd like to be able to elaborate on those projects as we move through. Background. Calvert County Government is on track for a significant positive variance in our income tax revenue. The funds provided to the economy for federal government are impacting both revenues and expenses in a positive manner. Discussion. The Department of Finance and Budget has had informal discussions with members of the Board of County Commissioners and county staff. The proposed use of this additional income tax money is outlined in the chart below. After review of the FY22 requested budget and ensuing six-year capital budget requests, Finance and Budget is proposing the following plan to the Board. This chart, it shows an allocation of $12,931,300. Our first project identified to date is Ward Farm Roundabout. We have not identified any money in a budget in a CIP either past or present. The cost of the roundabout is $3 million. The roundabout would ensure a safer entrance and exit from the Ward Farm Park. Funds will pay for the roundabout and ensuing road repairs as well as the cost for relocation of Smack Coast Utilities and lighting for the area. Our second project is the Lor Oyster House Rehabilitation. The Lor Oyster House, oh, sorry, for $300,000. The Lor Oyster House is a historical landmark on Solomon's Island. The Calvert Marine Museum staff are in a constant battle against the deterioration of this iconic facility. This early funding would enable the immediate commissioning of a professional assessment of the building and start of the rehabilitation program. Our third project is the Prince Frederick Community Center off Fairground Road for $6 million. Funding of this project with the FY21 surplus would not only relieve future debt and interest payments to the county, but also enable staff to begin immediate planning of the community center and move the construction timeline forward. This would allow the county to provide Prince Frederick with its needed community center much sooner than projected. Our final item is our stabilization account or our committed savings account for the county. We're proposing $3,631,300. The approval of the budget adjustment and corresponding resolution will reestablish the county's stabilization agreement to 9%. This means that the stabilization county savings account shall be maintained at a minimum of 9% of the current operating budget. The stabilization account is intended to be used only after all other available fund balances are exhausted and at the sole discretion of the Board. If the funds are drawn down below the 9% of the current general fund budget, the funds shall be replenished within two years. Back to our memo. The fiscal impact. The fiscal impact includes increase in the income tax estimate by $12,931,300. At the end of every fiscal year, any net savings, revenue less expenditures, falls to fund balance. The actual income tax receipts at the end of the year would be part of the equation if not used as recommended here in another manner. Again, the Harriet Elizabeth Brown Center or HEB will not require issuance of debt saving the county future principal and interest payments. The county will not have to provide funding for the two items not in the budget, Ward Farm and Lor Oyster House. This also increases the emergency savings account for the county. Conclusion Recommendation. Staff recommends that after taking public comment and the completion of the 10-day waiting period, the B.O.C.C. close the record and sign the resolution to increase FY2021's county budget and permanently increase the amount of the stabilization account. We'll now see if we have anyone on the line for public comment.
Commissioners, there are four callers on the line we just confirmed. So there are two public hearings scheduled for the day. Both hearings were duly advertised. Certificate of Publications made a part of the record for each of those two hearings. Citizens were provided the call-in number in advance. Each of the comment, each of the hearings will have separate comment period. So for right now, we're asking callers who wish to speak at this public hearing to press star nine. If you press star nine, you will be identified by the last four digits of your phone number and unmuted one at a time. They'll be asked to state their name, address, and whether or not they're designated representative of a group or if they're speaking as individuals. Speakers that are designated representative of a group will be given five minutes to speak. Individuals will be provided two minutes. So please press star nine if you wish to comment at this, at this public hearing. Caller 2500, we are ready to receive your comments. Please unmute your phone. Again, caller 2500, we are ready to receive your comments. Please unmute your phone.
By pressing star six, I believe, is the procedure to unmute your phone.
Good morning. My name is Margaret Dunkle. I'm speaking as Chair of the legislatively created Harriet Elizabeth Brown Commemoration Task Force. A major task force recommendation was a permanent community center in Prince Frederick named after Calvert County hero Harriet Elizabeth Brown. With this goal, I'm currently working with the group of Calvert County citizens to make the Harriet Elizabeth Brown Community Center and Park a reality sooner rather than later. This group includes in addition to myself, former county commissioner Pat Nutter, Malcolm Phon, Lieutenant Colonel Dave McDowell, and Guthrie Smith and Debbie Shoup of the Calvert Collaborative for Children and Youth. I'll be brief. We've reviewed the staff recommendation to the Board on the proposed budget adjustment and resolutions for increased revenue projections. We strongly support the approach in the staff memo specifically to use additional current income tax money to allocate $6 million for construction for the Harriet Elizabeth Brown Community Center and Park rather than to fund this project through later debt or bonding. A special thanks to staff of the Department of Finance and Revenue for this excellent approach to ensure we move a hill ahead to build the Harriet Elizabeth Brown Community Center and Park, starting with a master plan including architectural and engineering in fiscal 2022 and followed by 7.5 million for construction. Bottom line, we urge you to support the staff recommendations to lock in funding for the Harriet Elizabeth Brown Community Center and Park now. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Dunkle. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Please press star nine. You'll be identified by the last four digits of your phone number.
There are no other speakers.
Thank you. Mr. President, that would conclude the public hearing. Staff has asked for a motion either to leave the record open for 10 days or if you wish to close the record, we will return in two weeks' time for a decision on this budget adjustment.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hitchens?
Mr. President, with all due respect, obviously, to the caller and who I've worked with as we've moved along, I, I move to amend the proposal that's reflected in the chart in the memorandum to strike the $6 million and move that to the stabilization fund and add $6 million in debt in its place for the authority to move forward to the General Assembly in 2023 for approval and to ensure that $500,000 is immediately available on July 1st for the further planning and architect and engineering work that will be followed through also perhaps supplemental grants that Director Parks and Recreation has spoken of before. But this will get the A and E work underway and begin to move it through, which will take probably somewhere around a year, which would move us into the next fiscal year beyond. The, the community center is a long life, long enduring capital project that adds value to the community and well-being of the county. It frees up by doing this, if the $6 million frees up cash and wish to maintain liquidity for other smaller projects that are non-competitive or don't qualify for capital bonding. And they can be many, as we have experienced in the last year with hurricanes, with additional overtime funding, approximately $2 million during COVID to make up the difference during certain times. Those kinds of things, a new sheriff's department, the acquisition of land for that as a sheriff's department headquarters is obviously a likely issue on the agenda. Parks and Recreation, constant requirements there. Obviously, we see there with the Ward Farm Park is one example of needing an immediate $3 million in this particular case. But more importantly is using capital bonding while it's available and while the interest rates are low. And watching the Bloomberg market here lately, about two weeks ago, it commented on $68 billion has been now bonded or sought and bonding by local governments taking advantage of the low interest rates. We're facing an unknown. We're facing Dominion's drop-off and their contribution, which is going to be significant. So cash flow and liquidity is extremely important. We can control that by putting it in the stabilization account and have the ability to move money as needed when emergencies occur. I can go into other aspects of what bonding agencies and raiders look at, but let's just go with that for the time being. Carry on if you have any further questions about the bonding side.
Veronica, I have a question.
Is there, can I get, is there a second to the motion?
I, I'll second for discussion.
Okay.
Mr. President, because, because there's no, no vote allowed today by law, the motion to amend would be premature when it comes back in two weeks, obviously. But you certainly can discuss it, but.
Okay, but no vote today.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Veronica, my question is, you know, we've tried, we've put a threshold there, what we've tried not to exceed on the CIP. So if we add this $6 million, Commissioner Hitchens is right, there's a lot of other projects out there, but I don't want to squash something else, you know, I mean, do you add that today or you squashing something tomorrow? So I don't know where we sit. Which I'm glad there's not a vote today, actually, because I'd like to source that information. I don't know if you have it or something you can get back to us with, but.
I've, I've got some of it, Commissioner, already. And, and looking at the debt trends is what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yep. The debt service, I'd ask for an update on that. That debt service slide went out to you all and, and we're, we're maintaining, I think, our past five years or several years have been around 19 million as far as debt service. We're retiring some debt as we move forward, obviously. But they've projected out the debt service here just briefly in, in the major figures in '22. It'll be 20 point some million, '23, 20.7 million, '24, 19.03 million, '25, 19.2 million, '26, 21.9 million, 21.19 million. So that's, that's the debt service. The other factor is, is we've been consistently two, two and a half points under our debt ceiling. So that's a major factor to look at also. But right now, the key point is, is projects that qualify for bonding when the interest rates are as low as probably we're going to see them. Because obviously, at some point in time, as we move forward out of recovery, there, the, the inflation will start to edge up. So this is the opportune time and that, that's why in that comment, that note that I spoke of about Bloomberg, $69 billion being taken up to try to capitalize on the low debt, the low interest rates right now for debt. But with, with that, as, as council has pointed out, you know, we still have the period for the public comment and will come back and take it up later, but I wanted to put it on the table today.
Commissioner Hart, also to add to that, I understand that interest rates are low right now. My concern with the Harriet Elizabeth Brown is that we do not have authority currently. We, it would go into next year's legislative request. The second part of that is that that bonding would hit FY2024. It would be in that project list. That's where it was. So if we returned it, that's where it would go back to. And we all know FY24 is the date that we're looking at where our income could, you know, come down.
Sure.
We do have a, I mean, we have a lot of big projects in the next six years.
If it goes in '24 bonding, it'll be subjected to whatever '24 rates are. So you're not going to capitalize on today's rates with that said, so.
Correct. That's another concern. We, if we receive authority in Jan, in February, March next year and we put the bonding in FY24, the $6 million, it doesn't mean we would sell the $6 million at that time. We only sell bonds as needed so that we're not sitting on money and paying interest on money that we're not using. So we, I do, I go back to each of the project leads. Where are you at? How much money do you think you'll need in the next 18 months? So we do try to keep that even, making sure that our revenue and expenses stay in line.
Now, there's no doubt, see, it's going to get ugly. I mean, there's some big ticket items out there that some hard decisions got to be made on. So that was my concern. Where would we be sitting? So, okay, but that, that answers that question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that, that partially answers the question. The larger question is, obviously, we don't know what the interest rates will be in, in '24. But with the, with the Fed's position and Chairman Powell spoke that he sees inflation still remaining relatively low for the next two out years there. Again, it's a long-term project and the need for liquidity because we lose Dominion. That's a significant hit in liquidity right there. That's a significant hit on, on impacting on one particular point.
We're not going to lose Dominion. It's just going to, their property tax will depreciate possibly by $9 million is, is.
They're what I'm speaking of, and we, you and I know what.
Yeah, 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 just have to scare the public.
Ends at a certain point on, and that amount of money that's around 60 million drops off. So that's a significant hit in which we need to look at liquidity and be able to maintain. and be able to maintain liquidity and carry sue that period till we get some sort of normalization, which probably won't take place until '25 or '26 after adjusting for that dominion loss.
Mr. President.
Mr. Weems.
I'd like to make a motion.
Was there no vote on this?
Record.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I don't want to get ahead of myself.
Oh.
No, I just want to, to make a motion that we leave the record open through close of business Friday, May 14th, 2021.
Second. I have a motion in a second that we hold the record open until, what was your date? I'm sorry. Whatever date Commissioner Weems set. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And I think we have Commissioner McConkey on now.
I saw him.
I saw him in and out. So we do?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you, I didn't hear your vote, Commissioner McConkey. Did you vote aye or?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I have it recorded. And did you have any questions? Comments? Okay. I think he's in. Okay, you're kind of in and out. So I heard a yes. So the motion carries five oh. So we'll hold the record open for 14 days and at that time we'll move forward.
Commissioners, Mark Wallace County Minister, just for the record, so the, the public understands this as well. Finance and Budget are full aware that there, there are other projects out there that they've worked with Commissioner Hutchins as well as other commissioners. They have that list that they're ready to bring forward and bring that information to your attention for a decision at that time.
Right. And just so the public understands, you know, this is unexpected surplus that was not anticipated by Finance and Budget. And, you know, the plan that they proposed covers some holes that came up unexpectedly and puts some away and tries to reduce that capital outlay in 2024, which when you look at the CIP is a little heavy in '24. So they were just trying to level out the CIP. And so the record will be open for 14 days and people can make comment and then we'll take all those comments into consideration after the record closes.
Through May 14th.
Through May 14th. I'm sorry, it's not quite 14 days. That's 10 days. 10 days. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Veronica.
Thank you.
Next, public hearing, Department of Community Resources.
Jennifer Morland, Director of Community Resources.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Busy morning. All right, I'm going to give you some background for this memo. Yes. Is that better?
Yes, ma'am.
Take charge.
All right. In FY 22, the Division of General Services was slated to renovate the Health Department's Behavioral Health Office at the Southern Community Center. As the Southern Community Center lacks adequate space to support senior center and parks and recreation activities, the Department of Community Resources explored the option of purchasing a dedicated facility to accommodate future population growth and expand services, including behavioral health and crisis for the Southern Calvert community. Discussion: The Department of Community Resources will need additional funding for the acquisition of a suitable location for a new health department location. The location would be subject to the terms, conditions, and restrictions of a lease from the county to the Health Department. The property is located at 11845 HG Truman Road, Lesby, Maryland, and an option to purchase was secured. The Department of Community Resources and the Department of Finance and Budget suggest a budget adjustment to add 249,150 to the capital improvement project, CIP, Health Department land acquisition. The requested budget adjustment would transfer 149,150 from the FY 21 adopted CIP Southern Community Center renovations and an additional 100,000 would be transferred from recordation tax. Fiscal impact: The FY 21 CIP Health Department land acquisitions will increase to 249,150 and the CIP Southern Community Center renovations will decrease by 149,150 and recordation tax will decrease by 100,000. Inclusion recommendation: Department of Community Resources requests the Board of County Commissioners hold a public hearing to accept comment and in conclusion, close the record, followed by approval of the budget adjustment. Should the B O C C approve the budget adjustment, staff request the approved exercise of the option to purchase by authorizing the board president's signature on the contract. And with me today, I do have Tom Jones with General or Public Works Division of General Services or Buildings and Grounds. God, I hope I have that right.
You're good.
All right. And I also have Veronica Atkinson back because, of course, this is a capital project. I would like to also note that the health part of the purchase for this, it does involve a grant, which we have in place already with the Health Department for 250,000. And now we'll accept public comment.
Yes, please. Anybody on the line that wishes to speak at this public hearing, please press star nine.
There are no speakers.
Thank you. Mr. President, this is not one that requires any waiting period. You're in a position today to want to first approve the budget adjustment, then authorize the signature on the contract exercising the option.
So is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to close the record. Approve the budget adjustment and approve the exercise of the option to purchase by authorizing the board president's signature upon the purchase and sale agreement.
Second.
So I have a motion in a second to close the record. Approve the budget adjustment and authorize the president to exercise the option. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Jen knows I'm looking at her.
Yes, I mean, a key part of this, of this particular project is ensuring that we have a lease in place with the Health Department that satisfies the commissioners' desires for this location as well.
Yes.
Yep. Very exciting that there's potential for expanding the Health Department services in the southern part of the Calvert County where there's a definite need. As Commissioner Hart mentioned last week, we need more prevention.
We do.
So that's one of the exciting things that we hope to bring to Southern Calvert. We lost the Dr. Dr. Nassar's and Dr. Bennett's offices, which were key primary care locations in Southern Calvert. And St. Leonard is a shortage area for primary care as well. So this, this is meaningful that we're, we're expanding operations down there.
We lost Dr. V. How many years ago?
Dr. V.
Yes. He was, he was the guy.
Way back. And the building is structurally sound. There's no, we don't find, there are no issues we're going to have to address. We've done a thorough check of that.
Yes, and I have Tom Jones here if he wants to provide a few comments on that.
Morning Commissioners, Tom Jones, Deputy Director for General Services. After we reviewed the building, we had staff and contractors come in and review the buildings. There was no structural issues with it. The building is in sound shape. There's no glaring issues or needs at this point. So, you know, to me, it's a sound building to purchase.
Okay.
Our opinion.
Just want to make sure we do our due diligence and we don't end up with.
By an eleven.
No, sir.
Yes.
Absolutely.
For sure.
And I'm glad you had an opportunity to showcase that mask as well.
I like the jacket.
But as Jennifer's laid out, there's a definite need in the community for services and we saw an opportunity and the Health Department has agreed and we're going to get a lease drawn up that satisfies everyone and get that put in place. So any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Yeah, we had to get that jacket on.
You can't pass that up.
Are you going to your restaurant job when you leave yours?
Tom, I, I didn't, I didn't notice the jacket. I just noticed the hair, brother. You're looking good, my friend. Yes, sir.
So at this time, we're at the point in the agenda for public comment?
If there's anybody on the line that wishes to provide public comment, the floor has been opened. Please press star nine. You'll be identified by the last four digits of your phone number.
There are no speakers.
All right. Thank you. Last item on the agenda is Commissioner Reports. Mr. Hutchins.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the second time in a row, not having spoken on a comprehensive plan, adoption, two years almost, the second time in a row here, I'm going to have to make a comment on that. With regards to the property that was incorporated in the, in the comprehensive plan at Cox Road in Maryland 24, the east side of that was several parcels of property that included all of the left of the school. This was a recommendation of a consultant. It was approved by the Planning Commission, was a logical inclusion in the town center and it's for future growth and future projection. And again, it was properly adopted during that period of time. So hopefully that, that clears up the last concern. And with that, Happy Mother's Day. It's a wonderful occasion to celebrate.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Hutchins. Commissioner McConkey, you still with us?
Yes, I have nothing to report, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hart?
I just want to say Happy Mother's Day and, you know, it's not just a Hallmark card. You know, when you look in, like you always hear me say, turn off TV, stop watching the news. You think of everything good in the world and that's mom. You know, from the time we get here to we, first day of school and we're scared and everything else, it's always mom. And mom has one of the toughest jobs, one of the most important jobs that can ever become a person. So, you know, it's not just that Hallmark card or everybody on the cell phone screaming Happy Mother's Day. No, make sure mom knows, you know, that how important she is because she, she is that important and, and so.
That's it. And Commissioner Hart, Commissioner Weems?
No, just, just to echo Commissioner Hart, for all the mothers out there and all that you do, you know, you're, you're a blessing. We love you. And that's all I have. Ms. Joyce, Ms. Joyce, I, I would, I didn't mean to, but it's, she's a great woman, a great example, a shining example of motherhood. And it's reflected with Ms. Ruthie. And I guess I should stop louting her praises.
Ronnie's going to come looking for you.
I know.
Joyce comes from good stock. She's a Hutchins. My grandmother was a Hutchins. So we're first cousins and. She had no, she had to turn out good.
Right?
Right?
The whole family.
Commissioner Hutchins, Commissioner Hutchins, how does that fit in with you, sir?
I think it's the second cousin is how it works.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
If you've been here more than 100 years, you're related closely.
So you know what Pop Pop told me when I was little? So go figure, I'm running my mouth about something, right? I'm real little and of course, just running off at the mouth and he says, now listen, remember, either we know them or we're related to them.
That's exactly right.
So, and that's always been a good thing. That's why we've always been, you know, Calvert is different.
Yeah.
You know, we, it is one big family. It really is. Like you say, after, I mean, it's just, so, and I don't mean that all in a positive way. I mean, I really do. It's, it's, so.
It is a good thing. So the only, I mentioned earlier in the discussion, we were in Solomons the last two weekends and it was really good to see all those cars in Solomons. I mean, we get out of church around 12 o'clock and there's Harley, a parking space. So it's, it's really good that that's all coming back. And I want to reiterate again, the restaurants are having trouble staffing up. So if there's anybody out there looking for a job, there's certainly opportunity available today to get a job. And this morning, coming up here on the radio, I listened to the local radio station and last night, apparently, one of the late night talk shows had done one of these things where they go out on the street, ask people questions. And yesterday, they went out on the street and asked people to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Nobody could recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Are you kidding me?
On the street. Nobody. I mean, it just tells you where this country is today.
Is that not taught in school anymore?
It's, some schools it is and some schools it's not.
Oh, wow.
Nobody they interviewed on the street.
That's heartbreaking.
That's a sad state of this country.
That is heartbreaking.
People don't know the Pledge of Allegiance and they don't understand the Constitution and why we're here and who we are and how we got here. And I say all the time, I don't know where this country's going. I'm glad I'm old, is all I can say.
That's, that's sad to hear that.
But that's a, it's a sad time. It's absolutely correct. So.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Hutchins?
I know it's out of order, but would you allow me just to make a comment on the pledge?
Sure.
When the, when the phrase added, "One nation under God" was added, I was in elementary school. And we said the pledge every morning, just as we do here when we convene the board and you convene the session. We have the invocation and the pledge. So it's, that's a very important element. And, and I know that some of you have picked up that the way I use "one nation under God", the comma, there's no comma between "one nation" and "God". It's "one nation under God". And so that makes a difference too.
That's right. So just pretty sad to hear, you know.
Where was that?
Well, it was Jimmy Kimmel last night, I think, was the show. And they were talking about T-Bone and Heather this morning and played the tape of these people trying to recite the Pledge of Allegiance and some of them had no clue. I mean, "I" was about all they could get out.
And if you noticed that the, the way that to be cool is they have no allegiance to anything, right? You know, it's like, don't, don't try to put me in a box. Don't try this, you know. There is absolutely nothing wrong with saying that you have respect for your fellow man, for your countrymen. That's what that's all about and about the way of life and the principles of truly having a nation that's worth fighting for, worth dying for, for freedom for everybody. Let's like to start off this morning, freedom of speech. Sometimes there's things that people say we don't like it. But could you imagine living in a place where you can't say things? Where somebody can tell you what you can and cannot say? And I don't think there's anybody that wants to live in a country like that. And boy, that's, that's upsetting to hear that.
And it brought me back to that sign, you know, that sign, the messages on that sign over the years have been controversial. But, you know, at the end of the day, this country was based on freedom of speech. And as I said earlier, you may like the message, you may not like the message, but it's what this country was founded on. If we're going to censor everything we say, we end up in a, in a, what I believe is a bad place. So, you know. Sorry to get on a tandem, but it bothered me this morning when people cannot cite the Pledge of Allegiance. I mean, it's pretty basic, but they don't in schools. They don't.
That's.
A lot of them don't do it anymore. So they, you know, it offended somebody. So they stopped. So anyway, I may get some hateful mail, but whatever. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session. Oh, we can just adjourn today?
Oh. Yeah.
Jeez. I'm not used to that.
I think that's first.
Chair would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to adjourn. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five oh. Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.